It looks like everyone.
Meet myself, yes, we have everybody back.
So I will call to order the regular meeting of the school camp of March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty eight. Um, we will return to our, our regular session. We will start with public comment. If there is anyone that is an attendee that is here for public comment, please raise your digital hand. Otherwise, we will move on with the agenda. Seeing none, um, we will move on to superintendent chair and student remarks. Dr. Hackett, did you have anything to share at the top of the meeting?
Um, I, well, I guess I would first like to start by making sure that, um, Ellen Charlie enjoyed their, um, their snow day. Um, which was really, I want to be clear, it was an inclement weather day. Um, and I do still think it was the right call for probably morale reasons, maybe as much as anything else. But, um, I do think it was the right call and, uh, hopefully we, it looks like we're going to be in the clear tomorrow. We should be good to, to return to school and just want to thank everybody for their patience and appreciate that. I know that that kind of changes is not easy to make either as teachers or as parents or as kids. So, well, I think probably a little bit easier for students, but, um, but beyond that, no, I do not have anything else to add.
I, um, just want to remind everyone that the high school play guys and dolls is coming up. Um, and congrats to all the teams, um, at the high school on a great winter season. Um, we had a number of, um, teams go on to postseason play and, um, those that were not able to definitely gave it their all. It was a great winter season. Uh, kindergarten registration is online and available, and we're asking residents in town to, um, register your new kindergarteners by March twenty fourth. Um, and I also wanted to acknowledge all the elementary schools that have been returning to regular events as well. It's been exciting to see, um, our elementary school thespians and scientists and readers. All be able to celebrate those events back at their buildings. Um, I, I certainly missed seeing all of those over the last couple of years, and it is really good to see those community events back. Um, also remind everyone that there's a town election this Saturday, March eighteenth at Winchester High School. And that we will begin town meeting on April twenty fourth in just over a month. And I would like to welcome back with us again tonight, our student reps, Trilly Savage and Ella O'Connor. Um, they are seniors and I am just going to acknowledge that, um, they brought some other guests that are attendees in the audience with us today. So we welcome them as well who are, um, listening in and, um, participated and able to see how Charlie and Al are participating in our meeting. And I turn it over to the two of you.
Great. Hello, everyone. Um, like you said, Dr. Hackett, we are enjoying our snow day very much. Um, yeah, it's always good to have a day off now and then. Um, for comment on just our attendees, as you guys may know, we are nearing, um, April, which is when we elect new student council, um, officers, which will include our new, or our two positions. Uh, so we hope that you guys will be able to meet the next two student, uh, representatives soon.
Thanks, Charlie. Um, don't see Elle's hand. Mr. Brady, did you have an announcement to make also?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to also appreciate you mentioned the elementary events. The Morocco Science and Technology Fair was last night and the students did an excellent job. And I just wanted to appreciate all the staff members and parent volunteers who helped make it happen as well. It was nice to see so many folks there and just the students did some really exciting work and some excellent projects. So high praise for everybody and thank you for everybody who came out.
Thanks, Seamus. And with that, we will move on to our regular meeting. We had a consent agenda item to approve minutes from January thirtieth and thirty first. I will take a motion to approve those as presented.
They're moved.
Second.
Um, all in favor, Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Ms. Bollanessa?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous and, and we will get those minutes posted. Um, with that, we will move on to our report update and action items. Um, the first item that is up this evening is a review of the Lincoln Flatwork Capital Project. This is a project that this committee prioritized, um, a design study on with the capital committee, um, in our last capital cycle. And, um, the design work has been completed and it has been a topic of conversation, I would say, Mr. Nixon, at the capital committee. And there has been some discussion of this at the select board table as well. Um, given some of the discussions the select board has been having around how to fund capital moving forward. And so I just wanted the, Mr. Nixon to, um, be able to have an opportunity to share that design work and, um, review the scope of the project. As, um, we had investigated it, um, last year. Um, Mr. Nixon was able to send out a video in advance that he had prepared, um, last August that showed the extent of the kind of work that needed to be done there. Um, with sort of, uh, consent of the committee, if you've all, um, been able to view that. Um, I'll ask Mr. Nixon just to, uh, move on to the discussion with that unless there is a reason that members would like him to show the video here. Is everybody okay with him just moving on? Just a thumbs up will do for me tonight.
Videos of concrete are not that exciting.
Sounds like nobody's looking for the, everybody who's had an opportunity to see the video. Mr. Nixon, if you'd like to move on to the discussion we're having.
I'm, I'm happy to. And, and before I, I do have a couple of images, I'll share screen, but I, I also, if, if, if I'm not out of line to say so, Madam Chair. So what I think one of the things that Ms. Bergstrom is looking to do is, since the summer cycle always gets busy for us with capital, is to find opportunities to, to introduce and remind the committee of capital projects. So this was one that was sort of, uh, uh, certainly front of mind, given our last school committee meeting and the memos that she got from me. And as Ms. Bergstrom said, this was, um, could, this, this was actually voted the number one priority by capital. If the select board, uh, had opted to give us two million dollars in free cash so we could get moving on it. So the, the, this Lincoln project, believe it or not, is actually three years old. I went back and, uh, we prioritized it in the top five three years ago. It was two years ago next week, uh, that the design team actually, um, arrived onsite to do some of their initial evaluation and early conceptual work. And then on the basis of that, it was yet again a priority. It was our number one priority last year in the capital cycle. Um, this project, like, like most projects, when we start talking about a million dollars or more, which is what, what does the bucket that this falls into. What we generally do is we, we, we seek some sort of conceptual design work, some evaluative process, some conceptual design, early ideas around cost. And we kind of go back and do a gut check and determine, yeah, we, we still want to proceed with this. Then capital will fund, if you will, the next round of design. So a perfect example of this is what we're doing at McCall Middle School. The McCall, uh, facade project that is, you know, the McCall that faces Main Street, the main entrance. That project is, if you will, one capital cycle ahead of this. That began with an initial evaluation, some conceptual work. We then came back for another round of funding for more detailed construction documents and detailed estimates. We did that. We actually had the pre-bid conference last week. I'm, I don't know that I had shared this with you. Maybe we, this was after our last meeting. We actually had six contractors show up plus pre-casters, which is really exciting. And some of us were expecting like one or two, if any. Um, so I think there's a lot of interest there in that project. So that's exciting. So these always kind of go through a process, um, and as I said, a little bit of a, um, of a gut check. So what I would, what I will do, let me minimize my Zoom window for a moment. And I will pull up something I can share with you guys. Two things I'll share with you this evening. Okay, so this is not a, uh, this is not a full drawing set. I don't expect anybody to be able to, to read this in detail. Um, but hopefully you could, you can see, you can see this, that this is a, a survey. So the entire Lincoln site, um, has a detailed updated, uh, geo, um, topological, uh, survey that was necessary. Um, we also created, um, um, some demolition plans and new work plans. We'll get into that into a moment. I'm going to scroll through the details. Sorry if I'm giving you a headache. There we go. So this, this is really the one that I'm looking for and hopefully I can, um, zoom in a little bit on this. My, um, control panel is hidden a little bit. So, ah, there we go. All right. So hopefully you guys can see that. So the Lincoln site is sort of broken down into one, two, three, four, five, kind of six zones that are then developed in more detailed drawings. So if you've seen the video and you remember us talking about this, the history I want to give you about the Lincoln school is it's a beautiful historic building. It was our original Winchester High School. The building was substantially, well, really completely renovated from like nineteen ninety-eight to the year two thousand. That project went very well. The building itself is in overall very, very good condition and remains so today. However, um, a lot of the site work was frankly just built very poorly. Um, the contractor team sort of fell apart at the end of the project. Um, there may have been a bankruptcy, there were multiple lawsuits. Um, and really in the next maybe three or four years after the building was complete, DPW noticed that the site work began to settle. So when I say that, what am I talking about? I'm talking about the concrete, um, sidewalks, the granite steps. Um, really everything that we set foot on outside the building itself, it was beginning to move. Um, and it continued to move. So DPW actually came to capital, um, beginning maybe about six or seven years ago with individual requests. You know, can, can we have fifty thousand dollars? We'd want to fix this stair. Can we have forty thousand dollars? We want to fix this sidewalk. Can we have sixty so we can fix this ramp? And it was just this drip, drip, drip. And while there were repairs that were made, they would then subsequently fall apart or, or literally the flat work would just continue to, to fall into the earth. And it was really realized about four years ago that, um, when DPW led by Pete Lawson did some, um, a little more detailed investigation. Much of this was simply never built on the proper foundation. Um, a lot of the concrete was poured on loom. So typically you would excavate, you'd have a hard pack base, you know, some drainage layer, and then you can pour concrete. Sadly, that did not happen. And so we're seeing the effects of this today and, and you saw that in the video. So what I'm going to do is just very quickly is I, you know, each one of those zones represents a scope of work. So for instance, this is, uh, Washington Street towards the bottom of your screen, um, Mystic Valley Parkway to the right. This kind of hatch line represents the face of the building. This is that zigzag ramp, the ADA ramp, and this is the side entrance to the, the building. Every one of those circles that you see is a keynote. It represents where concrete has cracked or spalled, uh, joints that have failed. Much of this work, we believe, um, but, but the vast majority of this work doesn't require full removal and replacement. That there is, um, a lot of repair that the, uh, that the, uh, civil engineer feels can be done. Um, but it's, it's difficult work, but it's work that needs to be done because if we let it go, we're going to get more water intrusion, more freeze thaw. And in many instances, the buckling actually becomes a trip, fall hazard and puts us at risk. The area that you see here, that also did appear in my video, there is an area for wholesale sidewalk, uh, removal. Uh, we had an oil tank in the ground. Um, oh, we haven't used oil at Lincoln for many years, uh, but that tank needs to come out. Um, I need to check with Pete. That was supposed to have happened before the start of school. Um, but once that comes out, this would be completely, uh, repaved. It, it's just literally crumbling. Then we're going to move to the, um, the front of the school and I'll actually try to zoom out here just a little bit. So here we have Mystic Valley Parkway to the right. Um, and this is Washington Street to the south. We have in front of the Lincoln School, when I say the front, I'm talking about the elevation that faces Mill Pond. We have a number of these kind of meandering pathways that go down the hill, uh, with multiple access points to Mystic Valley Parkway. These are not historic, they're not original to the building. They were constructed around two thousand. Um, and they are in large part falling apart. Um, and I hope you did see that in the videos, the cheek walls have failed. Um, you know, there's some concern, the handrails will literally fall out of the concrete sometime next year. They may look nice in a landscape plan, um, but they don't, there's not a lot of utility here, given that there's just a very limited number of parallel parking spaces along Mystic Valley Parkway. When you consider the number of cars, you know, why do we need three or four access points for, for so few cars? Um, so these would be removed. Then if you look at the, uh, drawing on the left, um, again, mystic, um, you'd be looking sort of from right to left. This is the front of the building. Here's that other walkway that we proposed to just get rid of entirely. This is the main plaza at the Lincoln School. Um, and again, you would have seen in the video, the concrete here is just breaking up into multiple pieces. The granite treads, so this portion of the building is, um, original. Um, I don't believe the treads were, but, but everything else was original. This was meant to last generations and it's not. Um, from the video, you'll note, we actually have vegetation coming out of the treads and the risers. All of these granite treads have begun to roll and settle. This needs to be completely dismantled and rebuilt. The plaza needs to be repoured. Um, I'll, the, uh, uh, this is the new item in the project. It's, I, but I want to clarify, this isn't really sort of new scope. I, I want to say that because Pete kept coming to capital with request after, after request to fix pathways. When we realized these really can't be fixed, the only way to fix it is to tear it out and rebuild it. What capital, um, in the administration said was, well, wait a minute. Um, rather than just tear everything out and rebuild it as it sits today. Because everything we build, of course, then takes on a long-term maintenance cost. Think particularly about sanding, salting and painting and so forth for handrails. Um, do we really need to rebuild their, rebuild everything we have? Is there an opportunity to kind of simplify the scope a little bit? And that ultimately was the direction it was taken. And I'll share some of that language from the RSP with you in a moment. So the concept here, if I go back to this earlier image, is these meandering pathways that are sort of like roads to nowhere come out. And what we replace them with is frankly, just an extension of a monumental stair down to Mystic Valley Parkway. So there is a singular, simple entrance to the main plaza. Um, it would be granite treads. It's, they're not, not nearly as wide as what you see at the building. Um, and we reviewed, by the way, all the, the site plan, the evolution of this design included, um, the fire department's fire prevention officer who helped us with, um, like fire drill evacuation plans and so forth, so that we have egress with that's required. So the purpose here is to come up with a design that's very much in keeping with the building as it stands today. Uh, but eliminates just a lot of scope that was sort of thrown onto the ground, um, twenty-three years ago with, without much purpose. Um, there is, uh, the, the one item that, that is really sort of the, the, let's say the benefit. Much of this is really about repairing, uh, or replacing what's existing. Uh, we heard loud and clear from staff and, and I think we know this, the, the, the grass at the back of the school never lasts. We have so many little feet running around at the back of Lincoln and we're short on square footage for these kids to play. There was a request that if there's a way to create, if you will, space without, without walls, without turf, um, so that kids can physically be, whether it's an outdoor classroom space during the, during instructional time, or perhaps even during recess, an area where kids can be and be observed, be, be monitored, that that's, that was, um, a task worth evaluating. So what we show here is, um, again, the war memorial would be sort of planned north. So as you face Lincoln, if you're looking to the left, that's the main entrance, just to the right, as this past pathway curves. Um, we're proposing to, uh, um, sort of create a paved area with some curved, um, seating walls. So kids can again, use that space either for instruction with a teacher or if there's a group that wants to be out there during recess, uh, they can be without just literally rolling down the hill. Um, so that was really the one sort of additional scope item that came out of this because it seemed like an opportunity worth exploring. If I go again to the, um, the other end of the site, so here's Main Street. So McCall Middle School, the Unitarian Church would be just on, at the top of your screen out of view. Um, again, all of these little bubbles indicate, um, cracking, spalling, you know, failure and are just, uh, require a lot of masonry work and repair. But we're trying very hard to minimize the actual scope of replacement. So this is what really contributes a lot to the cost. At the back of the building, along the curved auditorium, uh, there are not too many photographs in, in this set, but this is a good one. Um, this is plywood. It's been there for three or four years because literally the concrete wall is spalling, it's falling apart. The railing that's set into the wall is now failing. And what was interesting is the principal and assistant principal said that during recess, kids love to go back here and hide. And, and it seemed like there was no really good reason even have a wall here to begin with. So the engineers, having evaluated the present day condition, frankly, just recommended get rid of the wall, get rid of the, the, the guardrail entirely. And what you can imagine here, this image, this kind of, this hatch shows the wall as it is today and it comes down. Uh, we just get rid of it. We simplify and we put in a new guardrail along the stair. Uh, staff have better visibility of this exit door. Um, but this importantly, this is a cheaper solution than to go in and try to do mason repair on a wall whose existence has us all kind of scratching our heads. There's no code reason for it to be there. Um, and so it seemed like this was another opportunity to simplify. And that was really what the charge was from capital. Rather than again, spend a lot of money to, to fix or reconstruct exactly what exists today. If there's an opportunity to simplify and reduce cost, we should do that. So this, this was just an example of that. Um, this is a plan view and an elevation, elevation, meaning you're looking sort of straight at it. These are those main stairs, um, at Lincoln. You will recall from the video, uh, the substantial settlement that has occurred there. So I, I'm going to use my cursor. I don't know if you can see this, that white line there. So that's a sealant joint along the granite. This whole concrete pad right here has sunked three, maybe three and a half inches. And as you go out towards Mystic Valley Parkway, um, it, it's literally just breaking into pieces. Um, and once again, there's no way to fix it other than to tear it out and rebuild it. Um, that, this is that area I'm talking about. Um, I mean, you, you see the cold joints very clearly because they were, they were poured that way. But, um, multiple sort of cracks and breakage here. And again, these are the treads, um, that I described that need to be literally just completely rebuilt. Um, I'll try to zoom in enough. I don't know if you can see, we have, we have some herbs and spices growing here, but the treads and the risers. Um, I want to be really clear, this is not a, this isn't because DPW has failed to maintain these. That's really not the issue. They've moved. Um, and, and so, you know, organics get in there. Um, and the only way to fix it, as I said, is to reconstruct it. So we have the details to do that over a poured concrete, um, foundation, um, and detailed estimates to back it up. Um, as well, I will, um, bring forward, uh, just a couple of other very quick things. This won't take too long. Move this up for a minute. Want to make this big enough that you guys can see this. Okay. Share screen. So this was the scope on the project. Again, this goes back about three, three years ago. Gives a history of Lincoln, its renovation from ninety-eight to two thousand. And we described the, the, the walk-off pads, the concrete, um, uh, by the way, so that includes like areas immediately adjacent to the building where they'd sunk. So when you have a heavy rain like we had today, we actually get water pooling against the building, uh, and that's not good. Uh, we identified many of the ADA barriers that now exist today because of the settlement. And we specifically said we were looking for an architectural and civil engineering team to evaluate and come up with recommendations for repair, replacement, redesign and/or removal entirely without any replacement. Um, and so that sort of broadly gives you, um, an understanding of, uh, of the scope. And then what I just thought would be sort of interesting, if I can pull this off here, a walkthrough memory lane, and there's something here Dr. Hackett may appreciate. Okay, so if I can, uh, am I sharing screen? I hope I am.
You were.
I was, and now I'm not.
I saw an old timey car.
You did.
Going down an old timey Winchester street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Well, hold on. Let me, let me fix that again. Um, I'm not going to be able to click through these as much as I, as I would have liked, um, without, uh, without losing my, um, my Zoom, but I, I got it back. So here we go. Couple of things I'm going to share with you. So I just have to say, Dr. Hackett, uh, you may recognize on the left is the Lincoln Auditorium. Um, on the right, you know, th- this is directly across from McCall Middle School. You're actually looking at the administrative offices of the Winchester Public Schools in the, uh, early nineteen sixties. There were two houses there. I can't imagine where kids went for, uh, any kind of recess. Um, but we did have two houses there, uh, on the property. Those, of course, were, um, eventually, uh, uh, demolished.
I was going to ask if it's still available because we are looking for space here in Central Office.
I, I know, I know we are. Um, I have an image, uh, here we go, on seventies. And boy, I wish I could click through these. So I'm only going to show you like three or four, but just sort of underscore the point. Uh, when was the last time you went to the library and jumped in a canoe? I love this image. Um, this is from the late nineteen seventies. Um, I show you this image because, you know, here's that street parking down Mystic Valley Parkway. So here's the front of Lincoln. I just want to underscore, you don't see these meandering pathways, do you? Th- this is what was, these are what was built, um, in two thousand that are falling apart. So my point in sharing this with you is there's no, they're, they're not of an, in of any historic value, nor were they ever meant to replicate anything of particular historical value. Um, so what we wish to do here is simply extend, if you will, that monumental stair down to Mystic Valley Parkway. Uh, we do need, need a, a means of egress and that stair will meet, um, all the requirements of, of ADA, um, including handrail work. Um, et cetera. Yeah. Um, I, I think, yeah, I should probably just wrap that up. Maybe Ms. Bergstrom and, you know, take questions. I have other old photos of Lincoln, but that's not why we're here tonight.
Though we do enjoy seeing them. Um, did anybody have any questions about this project for Mr. Nixon?
So can I offer, um, one other?
I was going to say, can I ask you real quick, um, about the ADA? Do, um, given that this project, the, uh, the cost has escalated from, I think it was when we first put it forward, it's eight hundred thousand. Now it's one, three?
Well, that eight hundred was just a wild guess. We, we, we said at least eight hundred when we literally had no work and no estimate. And it came in at one point four last summer. There was some value engineering, there, there was, there was some scope in there that didn't need to be there. Alternatively, there were some soft costs that hadn't been accounted for. So we basically just need to go in and update the estimate. Um, we think it'll come in somewhere between one point four and maybe, you know, at the top end, one point eight. I don't expect it'll get to one point eight, but you know, call it a million and a half and change.
Okay. Um, are there any ADA funds available for the ADA portion of the project?
So this is a conversation, you know, I could certainly have with the DAC chair. Um, as, as I think you and other members are aware, um, ADA projects can be very expensive. And so the DAC in some years, some fiscal years, they actually take money and sort of put it away. They, they, it's on layaway, if you will, right? So they, they put a little money away in fiscal year one and two, so that they have enough to do something in fiscal year three. Um, some members may be aware that the DAC actually kind of came to the rescue on the Parkhurst Elevator Project. That project, um, did come in over budget. Um, and Dr. Evans, uh, um, our former superintendent went to the DAC and, um, sort of, um, on bended knee and asked for some support. And they agreed to do that, but on some conditions. And that might have been that they weren't going to, you know, partially fund more schoolwork. Um, but I, I honestly, I, I think I just have to have a conversation with the DAC chair, um, about it. The, the point I just would make is the reason why, um, this project has advanced is it really is a growing. It, it has long been a concern of DPW. And when, you know, when concrete and steel deteriorate to the point that you can see it as just a casual visitor, as opposed to somebody who's OCD like me, um, it's pretty bad. Um, and once that deterioration starts, it really begins to accelerate. Um, if you haven't seen the video, it's only about seven minutes, go look at it. Uh, these, the cheek walls are literally splitting in half. It looks like some of these handrails are going to fall out. So that's a liability issue. Frankly, it's dangerous. Um, so we know we need to do something about it. But, you know, the goal here, I mean, whether it comes in at one point four or one point six million, we were really trying to be smart about the scope. Because if we had simply gone in and said, we're going to tear everything out that's failing and we're going to rebuild it as is, I think it's a three million dollar project all day long. So we're, we're trying to, trying to be really smart, right, about, about what really needs to be there. Um, and I think our engineers have done a, a nice, a nice job carefully describing what does not need to be torn out and replaced, but just needs some repair work, um, with, um, some high quality, some products that I think will, will get many more years out of, of use out of it.
And I think that led into my second question, which was the removal of the meandering pathways and the railings that the DPW has diligently tried to maintain over the years and to keep in place. That was made actually as much of our cost decision as a design decision. It would be more expensive to replace the pathways and all those stairs as they are versus putting that singular stairway in.
Hundred percent right. That'd be four pathways. It'd be more than four sets of landings with granite. Um, and remember, the reason they're falling apart is they didn't have a proper foundation. So imagine we're going to have to actually go in and do deep, deep trenching anywhere we're going to do something. So we'd be just be tearing up the whole site. Uh, uh, and again, four pathways that lead to what I think is maybe sixteen parking spaces along Mystic Valley Parkway. Um, I mean, the, the historic photos will show, yeah, in nineteen twenty-two, the, the, the Great War Memorial was not yet built. So that's the war memorial there at the corner where we have a ceremony, you know, for Veterans Day and Memorial Day. So that's the war memorial there at the corner where we have a ceremony, you know, for Veterans Day and Memorial Day. There was a diagonal path that came up to the front door from that corner. That was obviously, that was removed when they built the memorial. But we've never had so many pathways down to so few parking spaces.
Thank you. I saw Karen's hand go up next and then Mr. Brady, I see you have a question. Karen.
I was just, I just wanted to clarify about the ADA compliance. You mentioned, Mr. Nixon, that the front steps were ADA compliant? Or does that mean that there's you, or you would go in the side entrance for, along the meandering ADA pathway to the door?
So I think I'm understanding your question. So, so ADA, obviously you can't take a wheelchair up a set of steps.
Right.
But, but ADA does apply to all routes of access, including stairs, both internal and external stairs. So they govern things like guardrail height, handrail height, the section of the handrail. In fact, the, the, one of the few remaining things we have to do at Parkhurst to make it 100% ADA accessible is to replace the handrails and the stairs at Parkhurst, the internal stairs at Parkhurst. Because we didn't have money to do that when we did VO. So yes, the, the stairs, when complete, will be ADA compliant. That does not mean you can take a wheelchair up them. You have other accessible routes for that. But in some of those earlier drawings I showed you, like the switchback ramp that does exist for wheelchair access, we've got more concrete failure there as well. So ADA even limits you on what sort of, you know, when you do have concrete settlement, you can, you can only have like a vertical lip of a certain dimension and beyond that, that's considered an ADA violation. And they're, they're expensive to address, but of course even more expensive if somebody should, you know, God forbid, get hurt. By the way, there, there, but, and I know Seamus has his hand up, I just want to say. Sadly, so when the Lincoln School opened, its grand reopening in 2000 was a big deal in our community. And within about six weeks, we had multiple ADA violation complaints filed by residents of Winchester. And so the district and the town manager and the town engineer had to go down to the Mass Architectural Access Board. And in fact, there were numerous ADA violations in that building that needed to be addressed. And the way the MAAB works is they, they keep those files handy, you know, for future reference. And all sorts of commitments were made by the superintendent and the town manager at the time towards keeping Lincoln 100% ADA accessible.
Mr. Brady.
Thank you. Thanks for all this. I, I certainly am not a fan of deferring maintenance and letting things get worse by any account. I just, I'll share feedback from the community. I've heard from parents who kind of, they think about the number over a million dollars to straighten out some of this access. And you know, to them, what could a million dollars be spent on in terms of the playground there? Other things that kids can use and enjoy versus, you know, in their minds, people are getting into the school. Yes, there's issues, but so just to put that out as, you know, what, what I'm hearing from folks. But I obviously, as I said, I, I'm not a fan of deferring maintenance. It always costs more in the long run. You let problems get worse. They cost you a lot more. So. But just, so we've heard that feedback.
Mr. Hopcraft. Thanks, Mr.
And I just, um, I guess I comment that, um, what I, what I thought I heard Mr. Nixon say is that we would have a savings of a million, two million and a half by not replacing those, those failing sidewalks. So in terms of, you know, fiscal responsibility and the residents wanting a million dollars for something else. But I heard was that I think this proposal saves that money. And I'm generally supportive of fixing things that need to be fixed.
Yeah. So this, this project, that's a fair assessment. It limits the scope for wholesale new construction. Because so much of what's there that's failing, if you're going to fix it, you have to tear it out and just rebuild it again. So we would be building multiple paths of, of limited utility and at a greater cost.
Thanks, Mr. Nixon. Are there any other questions about this? I really appreciate you bringing this forward to us. I know the, as you said, that the initial cost that we had talked about as a school committee was just kind of taking a stab at how much it would cost. And it's always surprising when we go back and then do the design work and find out that no matter how much we value engineered it, it's more expensive than we started at. And I, I have heard also, you know, that there are, to Mr. Brady's point, questions from the community, you know, about playgrounds and all kinds of spaces. And it's hard, I know it's hard to prioritize maintenance needs over playground needs, over park needs. There were all kinds of needs that we have in town and we really appreciate the capital process for helping us do that. I know, Mr. Nixon, you also went to a meeting the other night on the VFA database, which helps us to look at things townwide. And, you know, I think maybe the, as a future agenda item, we may want to talk about our playgrounds at our schools and how those are maintained and updated. I know that the DPW has a large role in that. So that might just be a good thing for us to set aside and talk about as a separate issue. Cause I don't believe that they generally fall in the capital planning process. Do they, Mr. Nixon?
The, the last part with respect to the VFA database?
No, the playgrounds, they don't generally fall.
So, so I'm, thank you. So there, there's, there's really a financial threshold. For many, many years, it was understood that if it's a, if it's a one-time sort of fixed cost expense that falls outside the operating budget and is $25,000 or more, it's eligible for capital consideration. We actually revised our policy about two years ago. We, those amounts had not changed in many, many years. So for the schools, we made it $35,000. Thought that was the, the right thing to do. The, again, the, and, and we changed it for DPW as well. So, you know, the DPW is simply expected to find resources in their operating budget for, for some things. Particularly if it is, you know, a, a maintenance, a maintenance issue that you know was coming and is not so gargantuan a cost that you may be able to plan for it. Can I just also say that I'd like to respond to what Ms. Bergstrom just said. Making that point about, you know, three years ago, what we said is, well, the Lincoln work would cost, we, we assumed at least $800,000. So that number just kind of got plugged in. But we didn't really have confidence about that, other than we didn't think it would cost anything less than that. We always have to be careful when we, we talk about a need that we know we're going to have. When we don't have detailed architectural or engineering drawings and we don't have a detailed cost estimate, we can sometimes trip ourselves up when we throw out those early swag figures. And then perhaps over rely on those without reminding ourselves that that's really all they are. So perfect example, and I think Ms. Bergstrom spoke to this at the meeting before last, as a part of that whole $2 million free cash gift conversation with the select board, there was, I understand, some conversation about replacing the roof at Ambrose and replacing the roof at McCall. Both of those are fairly high priority projects. But we don't know what a new roof at Ambrose is going to cost yet because we haven't done that evaluation work, especially at McCall, where we have multiple roof types of different ages, of different materials, different flashings, different intersections. There was a lot of pressure for us to come up with a number last month. What will the roof cost at Ambrose? What will the roof cost at McCall? And we simply dug our heels in and said, it could be anywhere between one and $3 million. And having said that, who knows, we, we may, we may get burned for that. Maybe a new roof at McCall comes in at three and a half and somebody will say, well, you were low. But you have to do that early work. And as we said at the last meeting, that early, early kind of conceptual evaluation was funded by Fall Town Meeting from McCall, Ambrose, the library and Town Hall. Those bids, I think were, I think they were just opened last week or they're being opened this week. I don't know if Andrew knows, but that, that RFP went out. So that early evaluation work is going to be taking place. We always know much better what things actually cost when we get, when we have the time and the resources to do more and more work to define the problem and the solution. And that's the case with Lynch, which is like next in our discussion tonight, right? The further we go down the path with TAPA in design development, the more and more confidence we'll have about what the new Lynch will cost because we've got more detail to show.
Thanks, Mr. Nixon. And as Mr. Nixon said, the onset, each year as a committee, we're expected to rank our list of capital projects that we do send to the capital committee as all town departments do. So in, I, I think it would be beneficial to this committee as we move towards that process over the next few months, to be able to get quick updates on what the major capital priorities for the district are. It's always hard to just get a list and know exactly what the scope and understanding of that is as we rank them. And it is in our authority to rank those before we send them to the capital planning committee. So we hope to see a few more quick presentations from Mr. Nixon over time as those sort of rise to the surface. And I think you did a great lead in, Mr. Nixon, there to move us along to the Lynch project.
Sure. Okay. So let me, I'm just bringing that up. So let me, um, just want to blow this up big enough so folks can, can see this both online and at home. Okay. Hopefully you guys can see that. So these are just a, a few quick slides. And Dr. Hackett, I've already been talking so much. I am putting you on notice. I'm going to expect you to weigh in and describe some of this in a moment. The, the plans, first of all, these plans will be very familiar to the ones you remember from schematic design. You might even think they're identical. They're subtly a little bit different, but conceptually no change in terms of where the program elements are in this three-story building. You still have the main entrance to the left and you have our pre-K entrance. Our youngest learners are at the bottom of the building and then our oldest learners are up on top. Some interesting concepts that I'll, I'll, I'll give you a teaser for here. The EFPBC questioned early on if there was an opportunity for some sort of structured play area adjacent to the gymnasium, if you can see my cursor here. At the Vincent Owen School, at the very top of the building, you know, that's set into a hill. We did put up some backwards there. And there's a play area against the school. So there was an interest if we could do that. So you're going to see some ideas around that in a moment. That was not originally in the schematic cost estimate. So it remains to be seen if, if this is going to be in the budget. There's an interesting idea for some outdoor covered play space here. In terms of what's evolved, again, detail here, you'd have to zoom way in to see. But, but the team is getting really nitty gritty with administration. I might ask Dr. Hackett, you know, if you or Andrew could just maybe take a moment to talk about some of your engagement with the design team in terms of your, you know, either teachers, your staff, the users of the building. I mean, you're really getting into where offices should go and, and who's using the office and how it should be furnished.
Yes, we are. In fact, we actually had a meeting today on security. And we met with consultants on that. We had a couple of staff members there for that conversation along with representatives from, from DPW and had really good discussion around kind of expectations and, and what we wanted to see for different locations for things like cameras, entries, access points. Andrew could fill you in even more. We do have, actually this week also, we are bringing together, we have kind of reconstituted the Lynch transition team. If you remember last year, we had brought some people together for some initial conversations around Lynch. And we are bringing them together, back together on Thursday. We will be sharing with them some of what you will see later in this meeting, as well as just having, getting some feedback on, on multiple things with kind of an eye on, first of all, really an eye on, on the transition of Parkhurst and how we make those two years just as special for kids as, as the new building will be. So a lot of, a lot of engagement. There's been a lot of teachers who have gone through, you know, TAPA has met with teachers and staff to go through the actual spaces. So the details really are, are starting to come together. And I think, I, I really think that TAPA has done a great job of, of listening to the wants, needs and dreams of people. And really trying to, to, to work those into the, into the, into the next iterations of the design.
So an example of that evolution is, if you can see my cursor here, kind of lower left. This is the library media center, I believe. And, and what you begin to see is literally laying out stacks. I mean, it, the furniture, how many and how big are they? And what sort of circulation space do you need? And the same is true in the classrooms as they begin to kind of explore how tables and chairs might be arranged. Oh, and I should also just clarify, anytime you see a floor plan like this and you see this X through the space, that just means it's open to below. So floor plans are typically cut four feet above floor level. So here we are on the second floor. This is the gym. So that's obviously, that's, that's a more than single story high space. So that's, that's why you see it represented. And then the cafeteria also has a tall ceiling space. You also have areas like this. This is adjacent to the monumental stairs. So it's more like an open atrium. So that's what those, those Xs represent, an opening to below. And at the top floor, it still have this idea of outdoor classroom space on what is basically the roof of the second floor with a really cool canopy of solar panels that you'll see in a moment. There are some ramps that are involved, that are required to get to this space. Because if you can imagine the, the floor level you walk on in the hallway is one thing, but you can't walk out onto a roof at that same elevation. Because you know, a roof is just an architectural and structural sandwich. And it needs space to be built. And we also want to keep the elements out of the building. So some interesting ideas that are evolving. One of our newer EFPBC members on a project actually did something similar and had some interesting suggestions, I thought, at a, at a recent meeting. So I'm real excited about, you know, how that might evolve. These, this is a kind of a graphic exercise you've, you've not seen yet on the Lynch project. This is what we call building sections. So if we just take a slice through the building and, and sort of we look laterally. So here at the top, and this is really just to give you an idea of, of sort of the scale of spaces relative to one another. I'll try to make that a little bit bigger. So this, for instance, on the left is near the main entrance to the school. The existing play fields are off to the right. So you see the cafeteria space to give you a sense of that scale. And then you have the gymnasium here. Coming below, another section in the building, you see some of our second floor. I believe this is the library media center. And how it's kind of the ceiling can work in that space. And you see how the building kind of pulls back from the enclosed gym that you see in the backgrounds. Be a little easier to understand three dimensionally in a moment. And we have a little key plan down here. So you can kind of see where these are cut. And then if you move a little further down towards the classroom wing, sort of towards the, towards Horn Pond Brook Road, and you cut that section, and again, I'll, I'll try to blow this up. You can see, this is that outdoor classroom I just described, that's effectively on that second floor roof. And again, you can, just as I mentioned, you, you see how thicker that is. It kind of has to be because we've not only got to have the roof, you've got to have drainage and pavers and so forth. These are the, the hallways that you're moving through in, in the school to find your way to those spaces. Anyway, so I won't belabor the point, but those are available to you. If you want to check those out in more detail, again, just to give you an idea of the, of the massing of the building. And then these, I think are the images that are just a little more accessible for people to understand. The main bus drop off, really the main entrance cafeteria on the left. And similar view from a little further back at the drop off. So you can begin to get a sense of, this is not a small building. And how TAPA is both in plan and section, doing some things to break down the mass of the building. So in section, how does the facade of the building sort of push or pull away from you? So that you don't have a sense like you're just looking at like three aircraft hangars. And then in plan, how, you know, those elements of the building, they, they sort of lie at angles to one another. So they recede a little bit. And then of course, you, you, the front of the building, you have a lot of play areas. I see Mr. Brady has his hand raised. So I'll come to you in just a second because I don't have that many of these. Here's the pre-K entrance. And again, these are, these are early images. So they're really meant to represent just the massing and kind of the materiality of, of the building. The sand color is what we call jumbo brick. So that's a tan brick. It's called jumbo brick because it is literally larger than, you know, the average brick that you would see on your home or on frankly, a lot of institutional buildings. Jumbo bricks are great because they take less labor to, to install. But they also can play tricks with your eyes. So your, your brain sees, sees this brick and associates it at a certain size. But when you use enough jumbo brick, it, it sort of literally makes the building seem a little bit smaller, which is a cool visual trick. And it works. This is that outdoor classroom space I mentioned on top of that second floor wing. And you can get a sense of how the solar canopies offer some enclosure for that space. And then at the back of the building on the Lynch fields, we have the gymnasium to the right. And kind of the two classroom wings that are kind of broken from each other and planted at an angle, as I mentioned. And then here we go. So now if you're, if you move up, you, you see this element here off to the right. So imagine you're sort of in the parking lot today and you're looking towards the fields. This is sort of what you would see. So it's an early idea about how we can, how we can literally incorporate like a roof element as part of the building to provide some How we can literally incorporate like a roof element as part of the building to provide some shade and shelter for kids who want to be playing outside. And then just another view, this idea of transparency into the cafeteria space and perhaps the potential for some outdoor seating. You know, today we have that in enclosed courtyards. We don't have courtyards here, but it's basically the same idea.
Mr. Nixon and Mr. Hay also said that, that, that additional canopy might provide additional space for solar as well. Is that not correct?
Oh, absolutely. If we make the, yeah, the larger we make the roof, the more opportunity you have for roof mounted solar. And on that note, I think this is actually my last image. I don't have a lot of images that show you ground mounted canopies. That's intentional because while we're making every provision for them, they, they're not actually designed. So kind of don't want people to look at an image of a canopy and think that's it, that's what it will look like. We, we don't have that figured out yet. Nor have we really figured out what sort of scope of ground mounted solar we need. That'll become clearer once we do an update on the energy model, but that won't happen till April. But what we, what we know we will need will be some measure of solar canopies in what is, you know, kind of a staff parking lot. This is on the Lake Street side of the building. This is, I mean, this is, this is almost like it is today. Imagine you pull onto the site from Lake Street and you pull into that parking lot, sort of right there or to your left. We will have a field of ground mounted array. So you're seeing those here, but, but, but. Again, to give you a little more context, there's that overhang by the gym. This is the cafeteria. So again, you begin to get a sense of the massing and also just the difference in materials. And color. This, this lighter material, and then I'll, I'll shut up. Is, you see this kind of light sand color. That's a material called Trespa. It's a European product. We've actually used it at VO with a lot of success. It accommodates what we call a rain screen wall, so a pressure equalized wall. Very, very reliable. It's a phenolic resin. It's pretty cool technology. In this instance, it's just an opaque color, but you can, sometimes you will find Trespa, literally photographs of wood. That are actually made composite into the panel. So you look at Trespa, you think it's wood, you're actually just looking at a photograph of wood. It's very, very hardy and easy to remove if there's any repair that's needed, you know, within the wall system. So, and, and it's not, it's not, it was cutting edge 20 years ago. It's not today, but it's still, it's a, it's a great material. And I think we, we've been pretty happy with it at the Vincent Owen. So anyway, I think that, that was it. I know there are questions, Ms. Bergstrom, but can I just ask Dr. Hackett if he, if there's anything he wanted to say? I forgot.
I think he made a comment about the birds at the meeting the other day. Look where I landed. I was just concerned about our bird control efforts because that looks like a lot of birds. So they can make a big mess. That, that was my contribution the other day and I think you must be proud of that. So, no, I don't, Mr. Nixon, you did a great job.
Mr. Brady.
Thank you. I appreciate this. It's nice to see things moving further along. One just note related to our prior, my prior comment on Lincoln, I'm, I'm just hopeful that. As we work through this project, that when we consider the scope of the playground, we really take an opportunity to. Take advantage, I think, of creating a playground that's going to be of the magnitude for a school of this size and this many students. When you look at some of our school playgrounds, frankly, they leave a lot to be desired. And just as someone who happened to go to all of them on, on one particular day a few weeks ago, thanks to a certain two-year-old. I just think we, we have an opportunity here, the totality of the cost of the project, it's a small percentage to. Make the playground and particularly the structures more significant. Along with, as I think I've mentioned before, making them fully accessible to. Students and, and other folks who may have some mobility impairments. I'm just hopeful we can kind of keep that. In mind as, as we go forward, obviously the inside of the building is very important. But I also like to think that making an investment in those play structures is very important for the students as well. Having worked at enough schools where some schools had great playgrounds and some schools had fairly inadequate ones. It definitely makes a difference to the students and, and it has a big impact, I think, overall on their experience. And it's, as far as investments go, it's not, it's not a high cost investment in the totality of the project.
I, I think those are all great points and I, I was just scrolling, Mr. Brady to see it. Unfortunately, it's not showing up in this rendering, but the site plan does show. We're actually building a, a playground on the back of, of, of the new Lynch as well. What's that?
You can see it there. It's that blue little dome and the swings.
So I think there's something even a little closer to the.
I think that's just where they're showing it in this picture.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I wish I had the site plan up, but the, the point I was going to make is that. You know, what you find at Leonard Field, just like you find at Ginfield or you find at West Side Field is, is on the weekends. When we've got youth soccer or a variety of activities, you know, the youngest kids are enjoying the, the play structures that are nearby, right? We don't have that today. So if you go to use the Lynch fields, there is no play structure that's within a line of sight to mom or dad. You, you know, you've got to go up the walkway sort of to the school we have today. So the plan here is to provide a, a structured playground at the back of the school. That is just as robust as the one on the front, so that kids who are using the fields on the back have access to that as well. But I, I appreciate all the points you made.
Yeah, I just hope, you know, we, we look at, I think Morocco has the largest play structure, just at least visually of any of the schools. I'm, I'm hoping that we're envisioning something larger than that because this is going to be a larger school. Just proportionality, that would make sense to me, but hopefully that's something we can do.
Well, and given that this is also the site of our pre-K program that does serve kids with different abilities too. I would hope that it would, Mr. Brady, not just apply to the main playground for the school. But I think to Mr. Nixon's point that, you know, we should look at it when we're applying it to any new playground that we're going to build in town. Is that we build the best playground that we can possibly build for the most kids to be able to access it at all times. And I think I heard that as chair early on in this process, which is why the. The playground that Mr. Nixon just pointed out was incorporated into the plans and. The, it was not an initial, an initial thing, an initial item that was on the list. So I think we just have to keep an eye on that and think about funding sources. And if, if we want to make that happen, who we can partner with in the community to make those happen as well. So I think it's a, a good question. Mr. Nixon, maybe for a future question for Mr. Hay, if he could. Maybe give us some more information on the size of each of the, those playground sites. That would be a, that would be just good information for the committee to have, so we know how much space is dedicated. And has been left for each of those play spaces as well.
Yeah, that's easy to do and, and that's pretty well scoped out in the design development drawings, the, the, the 3D renderings that you see. I mean, it's great to see them because it just reflects progress and yet these are so very, very basic. So what, I brought this up just to underscore, we actually have a dedicated pre-K playground right here. But it, but that's literally just something that the architects at Tape sort of threw together for the purpose of the picture, right? Like, so, okay, there's a school and you've got this massing and then there's, there's an entrance and then you've got a playground. I mean, this, this should not be taken. Concretely is sort of how this will all evolve, but, but the site plan definitely has much more detail in terms of size and fixtures. And by the way, in cost, so I mean, it will all be there, Mr. Brady, because we're going through an early design development cost reconciliation right now. So whether it's windows, bricks, or HVAC units or playground structures, everything's getting dollars associated to it.
And sustainability.
That's intrinsic to everything we do.
Yep. Mr. Hopcraft.
So I think you may have just addressed my question. I just wanted to confirm since it sounds like we have. Playgrounds on the front and back and we have the, the pre-K playground. And I appreciate Mr. Brady's questions about the size and capacity of them. But our, our scope and financing for this project fully includes building all of these play structures, right? I got a little nervous when Ms. Bergstrom was talking about community support and certainly augmenting them is great. But, but the basic, all, all the site work and all the. Playgrounds are included in the scope of this, right?
They are, they are hundred percent. And I, 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 I only took the screen down for a minute so I could blow something up. I mean, this is an older image, but. And it's not great resolution, but just to give you an idea. So some, you know, there's been some evolution back here. You've got some lines, landscape elements at the back. You, you will have a playground at the back of the building that I described. You have, this is the pre-K player. By the way, th- this is now schematic, so this is all of all. But what the, the point I want you to, to hear is playground one, playground two, huge playground three. Very large. And then beyond that, we have a turf field so that that's accessible even after a heavy rain. And this is not a small thing. This is, I, I think Dr. Hackett, Charlie described, this is like 60% the size of a regulation football field.
Correct.
Man, the kids are going to go bonkers.
They're going to love it because, you know, they're playing on asphalt right now, so.
Right.
They're an easy crowd to please. I mean, it's, that is a, that's an amazing facility for, for children, for child play. I mean, with that, with the playground right there, that big. And then that, the play, the play field that's, it's exceptional.
Outstanding lines of sight, which is important for, you know, younger learners. So they're going to love the field. I just love how wide open this is. So line of sight is, is important.
I just wanted to comment that asphalt that Dr. Hackett mentioned is an active parking lot, which. So it's off to go staying around the cars and everything, so.
Oh, that's right, that's right. No, I guess you're right. Yes, you're right. Buses.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Does anyone else have questions on the Lynch, new Lynch updated designs and plans as we've seen? It's always exciting to see the new details, Mr. Nixon, as they come forward and. We appreciate the opportunity. We know there's a lot of people thinking really hard about all the parts of this project on EFPBC. And through Mr. Hay and all of the architects and engineers through his group. So we appreciate you bringing it to us and letting us have an opportunity to take a look at it and ask our questions and. Bring them back to them as well, so.
I'm happy to do it. And can I just share for the committee in terms of next steps? So the, the, we, we, there are two different sets of professional estimators that are working on this project. Hopefully, they, they both worked with good success on projects in Winchester. We have one estimator who's under contract to the OPM, which is Hill. And we have another estimator under contract to Tape Architects. So they, they take all the drawings which, which they have, so the team just wrapped up that early DD submission. Each team is sort of independently scrubbing the scope and the numbers. Then they will get together and say, okay, this is what I got, what did you get? And they go through and, and in those places where they're very close on scope and cost, there's a high degree of confidence. There will be areas where the numbers are off. Somebody's high, somebody's low. And this is typical in a project like this, but it's fantastic to have two sets of estimators. This is what we call the reconciliation process. So one team of estimators may have caught something the other didn't. Or perhaps because we're still early in design, one team, because they don't see something, they may be making an assumption about like where the design is going. That assumption may be right, it may be wrong. So that takes a lot of time. We're expecting at the EFPBC to have those reconciled estimates at, at the very end of March. And then we have working groups that are focused on, you know, envelope, so exterior wall and roof. We've got a working group that specializes in building systems, mechanical, electrical plumbing. We have an interior planning and FFNE group. Dr. Hackett and Andrew were certainly part of that one with, with equipment being such a big deal. So individual members of the EFPBC, depending upon, you know, our professional background are on different sort of working and also time availability. Are on sort of different groups and, and we will sort of then go through that set and, and scrub it. And just, you know, ask questions, make suggestions, you know, flag areas with concern, if, if there are any, I'm not expecting there will be many. And then, you know, then the process just sort of moves forward, but it's a big, it's a big deal and I'm, I'm expecting that perhaps by. Mid-April, maybe third week of April, Dr. Hackett will be in a position to say, you know, with some degree of confidence. So this is the reconciled estimate as it exists today. And we're confident that number really reflects, you know, the scope as we understand it. It's important for us to be doing this now because things like that roof extension you just saw adjacent to the gymnasium. That was not originally in the scope, something like that is something that the Lynch community, I think, would, would really appreciate. On the other side of the site, we have that pedestrian bridge, you know, that goes across the Horn Pond Brook. That was really important for pedestrian safety. So that was not in the early, early conceptual estimates. We, we, we said it was something we'd like to do. We said it was like an ad alternate. And it really wasn't until the end of schematics where we said, you know what, we, we really just need to do this. It's the right thing to do for, for student safety. So they're just, there are a lot, and it's not going to be cheap. That, that could be a very, very expensive bridge, both in terms of construction and, and permitting and so forth. Because it's, obviously it goes across the brook, so CONCOM has a role. So a lot of work behind us, but a lot of work ahead. And I'm, I'm, I'm excited. I, I think the team is working really hard and doing a great job.
Thanks, Mr. Nixon. And with that, I will move into Mr. Marin while we're on Lynch. I think we have some good news about Lynch transportation. I think Mr. Marin has been working really hard with the transportation company to figure out routing and costs. And was able to present a. Information with more detailed cost estimate to the select board. Who did agree to use ARPA funding to help us out with the transportation costs in the next year last night. So, Mr. Marin, would you like to?
Could I, if I could, Madam Chair, just, just to, first of all, repeat what you just said. Andrew's done a, a great job. Working this through, really with, with the transportation company. As you know, we're currently in a three-year contract. This, we're going to our last year of a three, three-year contract with, for general education transportation. So this was a, this has to be like an addendum to the existing contract. And what you're seeing tonight is, is we're getting closer to having a really good handle on. We have a really good handle on cost. What we're still working on is timing. So you're going to see that, and we've talked about this before, you're going to see that the Lynch school will need a, a separate tier from the elementary level. That will start earlier and then consequently end earlier. That is also something that we now, we feel confident in the information we have. That we will be approaching the Teachers Association to have that discussion. So that we can have an agreement with them on, on what that looks like. There'll be other elements I, I, I know also of that conversation, like how are we going to handle a move? And you do, you have some history with that, so, but we, we will begin those conversations shortly. We are not asking you to do anything tonight. This is not an approval. This is, this is our, this is where we are. This is as close as we've been. We would anticipate that we might ask you to take some kind of action at your meeting on the 28th. So with that, Mr. Marin.
All right, great. Good evening, everyone. So I'm sharing here just our. Sort of where we're at with our assessment of the different plans that we've shown you in the past. If you recall, we sort of had two different pathways. One was looking at existing, existing routes and how do we expand those? Or incorporate the Lynch needs into those? And then there's kind of the option B, which is focusing on a new tier. And is it earlier? So currently, we currently run two tiers, one for elementary, one for secondary. And so to be. Can add a tier below or before the, the elementary one, do we add it after the secondary one? Or if we add that new tier to get to adjust times for all tiers, or can we make it work without affecting everyone? So ultimately what we're kind of holding in on now and having. Kind of in having great clarity with our transportation provider and what they're able to accomplish is this option B.1. Which is looking at creating that new elementary tier. Just for lunch before the existing elementary tiers. So we would expect the. Kind of first pickup on that run to be around 7:00 AM. With that arrival around 7:25 AM. For a 7:30 start time. And as Dr. Hackett said, that's current thinking, we're still working on that out. That's, that's where we are and has it today. Yeah, go to the next slide here. Yeah, so this expands just upon that, that B1 option. And there's a few next steps on that. So it's more school committees consideration and they're working with WEA. What that looks like on an impact to. The teaching side of it. They're working with that. And the refocused Lynch transition, transition team, their feedback from the families and. And parents that are involved. And then beyond that, once we kind of have these decisions, we're up to finalize those routes. To begin our FY24 registration, which the last bullet here expected around May 22nd or so. It'll follow the same process we went through last year where it's available online, families to register. And then we'd be planning for August to communicate those. And then we'd be planning for August to communicate those defined routes for everyone and uh, which bus everyone would be on. Uh, yeah, I'll pause there if any questions on that side of it.
I see Mr. Brady has a question. Nope, no question, Mr. Brady?
Yes, uh, just real quick. Thank you for this. I, I know you've done so much work, Andrew, on trying to figure this all out. And it is quite complicated. In terms of the Lynch stakeholder feedback, I'd just be curious to know, you know, what, what have we heard from folks so far? I haven't heard anything, but this is also kind of the clearest we've been. So I'm, I'm hoping I'll get to hear from folks soon. But I'd just be curious in terms of what, who we've talked to so far, and if we've been able to do any kind of surveys or anything like that, just to hear from the greater Lynch community. I don't know, Tom, if you've heard anything either, but.
I would just add that we, that will be on the agenda um, for Thursday, asking for help of that transition team. Who, who should we talk to? How do we best get feedback? Um, and the chief of point, Mr. Brady, this, this is as clear as we've, we've been able to, to, to get on this. And we didn't want to create or put out false options. We wanted to make sure that wherever we landed on this, it was gonna be actually doable. Um, you know, and for all the reasons we've talked before, like restrictions on being able to hire drivers. And um, this really uh, is, is really the, the best plan that we have. And now it's a conversation about how do we help families make this work on the front end and the back end. And um, I, in, in some just kind of informal conversations with some Lynch um, uh, staff members, actually, also with, with administration, there's, there's a, there seems to be some belief that, that Lynch families will take full advantage of the transportation from uh, to Parkhurst um, that, that we will see very strong ridership. So um, that, that's encouraging. I, I think that would be very helpful for the entire community, not, not the least of which is just the congestion and, and um, how difficult the Parker site will be with that many students.
And Dr. Hackett, weren't you able to also do things um, in the routing that we're going to make it easier for um, Lynch families as well?
We actually, the, the routes will, and the pickups will look very much like our, our current tiers. I mean, it, you know, we will provide the same level of service that we provide now as opposed to when we were looking at trying to incorporate it into another tier. We were having some conversations about group pickups. And if we can find a location, uh, could there be some supervision? Uh, but we are, we are sending up to eight buses out on the road and those students will be all coming right to Lynch. So uh, it's, it's in and out. Uh, so uh, I think it will be, I think parents will appreciate the, the, the level of service that we'd be able to provide.
And we'll be able to provide the same after-school care at an equivalent cost for families.
So part of what we are, Andrew's also working on um, is we do have to uh, go out again for the uh, the Kids Borough. Well, we, we do have to do another RP on that. As you know, we did a one-year agreement there. Um, and we, as an option, and he can, if you have questions about that, but as a ri- kind of a rider on that, we, we are going to be including an option to have a program at before after-school at Parkhurst.
And those are the same costs currently building to building. I think, Mr. Brady, am I, am I hearing your question in that it would be a little bit longer time for the childcare and you're hoping that they're not gonna charge parents more for that?
Well, I mean, I, I think it, it's reasonable if they have to have their staff there from one thirty to six versus, you know, two twenty to six. I think it's okay to have some small differential. I just, I'm hoping that it will all be, you know, within line at least. Um, cause there is, you know, that is, that would be advantage to some parents that great, they can drop their kid off at seven thirty and, you know, that, that's probably a big help for some parents who might wanna get on the road earlier if they need to be somewhere. So I can see the positive there. I just would wanna make sure that, you know, it, the after-school doesn't then stop at five o'clock or something, or, you know, stops at five thirty. It, it should stop at the same time that it does at all the other schools.
Hmm, I think I saw Mr. Hopcraft next.
Yeah, um, so I was just gonna chime in. Um, thank you for that question, uh, Mr. Brady. I think, uh, I think they're all really good questions and having lots of um, stakeholder uh, input is really important. Um, I, I give uh, Mr. Marin a lot of uh, credit and the whole team for like complexity and the amount of work they've done here. You know, we're going from one to eight buses because the Lynch community is so densely packed around the school that a lot of people walk and a lot of people drive. Um, but it's, it's a pretty heavy lift to uh, get all these kids up to Parkhurst and um, and, and certainly figuring out, you know, we went kind of quickly over the, the charts there, but you know, the, the, the this inability for the bus companies to hire that many more buses and, and, and whatnot, uh, bus drivers, um, you know, narrowing down what the uh, what the options are, um, so that we can really get that, um, get that input, which, which is Dr. Hackett said, we're meeting later this week. Um, you know, to, to talk about, I think, um, yeah, I, I think, I think a lot of it is just physics is constraining our, our actions. And I think it's good that we've narrowed down the options to now um, you know, really talk about those. And, and there are, there are nuances, um, you know, in here and, and uh, and Mr. Barron and Dr. Hackett have been you know, really good as, as new issues have come up to, to try to address those, but within the reality of unfortunately, um, you know, limited options of physics and, and employment things, but, but uh, but yeah, I, I will continue to get stakeholder input.
Thanks, Mr. Hopcraft. Mr. Nixon?
Thank you. Can Mr. Marin or Dr. Ecker just clarify for me again, the school year fall twenty-three is year three of our bus in contract?
Correct, yeah.
So as however this ultimately develops, are we messaging this as this is our, this is our twenty-three, twenty-four school year plan? And we remain silent on the twenty-four, twenty-five school year plan? And I'm asking it that way because what we're looking for today in terms of support is very different than what we would be looking for, you know, without the Lynch project. And I, I'm presuming when we go out to bid a new bus contract, we're looking for support for Parkhurst. Um, to what degree are the limitations of our current bus provider driving any of your suggestions tonight? You can answer that as specifically or vaguely as you want. Um, and and to what extent might a different provider give us some other options? So that in the second year of construction, there might be a different solution that just, it might be better. I don't know what it is, but obviously the, the Lynch construction is gonna impact us for two school years. I, I just wanna be sure we're messaging this the right way. Is this, Dr. Hackett, are you saying this, this will be our plan for the next two years? We're given that we have, you know, we, we only have one year left in the bus contract. Are you framing this as a, this is the twenty-three, twenty-four school year plan? And, and we're gonna sort of see how it goes. And then we might, we might make some adjustments in the second year.
Exactly, exactly that. Because when we go out for bid again, uh, we may have some vendors who bid on this who, I mean, ideally we would be running all on one tier, right? And we, we wouldn't have to create a separate tier for Lynch students. For all kinds of reasons. So uh, your question around capacity is really, is the question. I mean, e- this vendor may have more capacity next year than, than it has right now. I, 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 you know, and I don't know that capacity gets much better um, with other vendors, but we'll have an opportunity to put that out there. So um, we will craft, and Andrew is excellent at this. Um, we'll craft the RFP such that we have some options. Um, but primarily we would love to see uh, Lynch students be able to be brought back into, into the elementary tier for FY twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay. My only other suggest, i- it's a very strong suggestion. Um, have you, have you been having conversations yet with our various after-school providers throughout town? I mean, not just Kids Borough, but all of them, Kids Corner, um, others as well?
We have not begun that yet because we weren't sure what these times were gonna look like. So I feel like, you know, right now, we're in a good place to begin those discussions.
Yeah, I mean, it's been hard for you to do that, right? Without some guidance from the school committee. So I, I would offer, here we are, it's mid-March. Most after-school programs are putting out registration packets for the next school year as early as February with deadlines in March, certainly by April. So a lot of these programs are certainly gonna wanna know that there's gonna be Lynch kids that could be arriving earlier. Um, and uh, because they have staff, that there's staffing impact and, and those people have to show up for work. So a lot of downstream effect and that might affect their costs, right? So um, super important, I think, to get that message out to them um, a- as specifically or vaguely as you think it needs to be delivered, but certainly to get this on their radar.
Thanks, Mr. Nixon. Miss Boenessa.
Good. Just mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that you had a, that you had a good handle on the cost. Um, and I was just wondering how the cost of this option fell in with versus the other options?
Yes, uh, in terms of impact and cost, this was the uh, kind of lowest impact that we could find that was feasible. Uh, yeah, expanding those routes or expanding, adding buses to existing tiers was much more expensive. If you remember back a few meetings, we put that out because it's, you know, you're adding new drivers to incorporate into it. And here we're only adding two hours more to the day to the existing drivers. Um, and uh, we had a lot of negotiations back, negotiations back and forth, but we settled at a number that was um, less than we were initially seeing too. So uh, and just to add to Mr. Nixon's kind of question there, the, the vendor specifically for that deals with our buses has been very amenable to these uh, proposed plans and easy to work with. And they're very welcoming of kind of any suggestions that we have. So I found that to be a good process so far.
But I also want to be clear that we're not, you're not proposing this as the preferred option, Dr. Hackett, because it's the least expensive, but because it's the most, most viable and.
Because it's the only option that we can do. There's no level of guarantee or confidence that uh, we would, that we can, that the company be able to find uh, understandably, find enough drivers to work Lynch students into the elementary tier. And I also just wanna remind the committee, because you've been so clear about um, your goal around this, that you, we are looking to transport, we would love to transport a hundred percent of our Lynch students from Lynch to, to Parkhurst. That's not, that's not what we do currently, right? So not only are we, not only are we, you know, we are also expanding the capacity of the number of students from one school that we're trying to transport. So that's another reason why um, it was very difficult to have that as part of the, the existing elementary tier. I mean, normally we transport maybe fifty percent or so, not even that. Um, and when Lynch is back at, at Lynch, the neighborhood school, those numbers will, will drop dramatically. So um, this is a two-year solution. Um, in terms of what the two-year challenge that we need to figure out, uh, we need to provide a high level of service. We have what we think is a really good answer for year one. Uh, and then the, you know, we have some other factors at play, uh, not the least, which is that we need to vote for bid again for a successor agreement on, on general education. And uh, we'll, we'll have those discussions uh, that when, when, when the time is right.
I saw Mr. Hopcraft and then Mr. Nixon again.
I was just gonna add to what Dr. Hackett was saying that, you know, um, we have one bus going to Lynch, um, and we need eight buses uh, to move all of the students. And if I have the, the numbers right, eight buses is about how many buses we use to move the entire elementary tier. Um, you know, and so, you know, we're, we're literally doubling the bus fleet if, if we, you know, try to expand the tier. And that's when the physics comes in.
Well said.
Mr. Nixon?
So a couple of clarifying questions. Dr. Hackett, is it, is it literally only a shortage of drivers? Is it also a shortage of buses? Does North Suburban have the buses?
North Suburban can get the buses. The buses are not the problem. The problem is the drivers. And um, part in, you know, I came to Winchester for all kinds of reasons having to do with how awesome Winchester is. But I have to tell you, I don't miss running the transportation department in my former district. We owned all of our own drivers. We negotiated with the Teamsters Union. We had our own buses and we were the ones on the hook if we were down but drivers. So um, the test itself that is being administered now by the state police as opposed to what the process was before is, is very difficult. And, and candidates um, are finding it very hard to pass. So there is a high washout rate uh, for drivers who, you know, the company brings them in, they train them, they, they take them through, get them ready for the test, and then they wash out. And um, that has happened with, with this, that our transportation provider is not the only provider that's having this challenge. Um, you know, we, 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 we hear it, we heard it at the beginning of the year. If you remember where we were at the beginning of the year, uh, you know, trying to, trying to find the drivers to fix the problems we were having. Uh, you know, we are just now really at full capacity for what we actually do with the tiers that we have.
So my, my understanding is that's also affecting towns' um, snow clearing operations. So towns used to be able to train plow drivers and now they, I think they've lost that ability as well for certain heavy equipment. Um, but you did read my mind. Um, you know, Charlie Baker made National Guard troops available to drive buses during the COVID pandemic. And so to the extent there are buses that are available and they're available for lease, I couldn't help but wonder, you know, would it just, would we, would we have better success going out and just hiring drivers for a period of time? Um, you convinced me that would be really difficult, but I, I guess I had to ask the question because if the buses aren't there, it's a moot point. But if the buses are there or they're available and the issue is simply the personnel, um, do we have levers we can pull as a district that are different, any different than what North Suburban can do?
I, I, I'm not sure you heard the first part of what I said about how happy I am to be here.
I said you read my mind.
Yeah, you got me in a cold sweat. Um, that is a hu- that's a, obviously a much larger conversation, but this would be the time for us to entertain it. I mean, if that's something that we, that we wanna think about. Um, we're coming near, you know, we're near the end of contract. Um, we could stand, we, we absolutely could, could to begin that work, but that's, that's a pretty big endeavor, although not huge endeavor because actually our transportation needs in Winchester are quite a bit smaller than uh, many other districts.
Yeah, just to, to, to frame my question though, Dr. Eck, I'm not suggesting like we go out and hire drivers for all the buses in the entire district, but it would just be for that, for that need for Lynch to sort of get us through this year and, and we might learn something through that process. Now, there would be a cost for that, but that's the evaluative process, right? What's the cost for that versus the cost of, of this proposal, proposal that you brought us tonight? And then certainly one benefit is if we were able to find the drivers, we can run it on the same route, right? And then we're not affecting the schedules of, of kids and families. I, I, I have no, I, I have no ability to know what our success would be finding drivers because there are, I mean, can you just give us a sense? Do, do you have a sense, having come from point south, um, you know, are, are, do like a third of the districts in Massachusetts, our size, have their own transportation department? Is it ten percent? Is it half? Maybe, maybe Peter knows as well. I, I just.
Yeah. I, I would hate to guess on that. Not, not a lot. Um, Worcester actually, interestingly, Worcester just, just brought their transportation in-house. Um, but not many have their own transportation department. I mean, you know, part of it is that the startup costs and the overhead to get it going is huge. And what, what's really helpful, like if, if you're with a larger transportation coordinator, uh, uh, company and they have three people get sick that are driving for you, they can pull people from another community that they have and make it work. When I, where I was, where I was, our staff was our staff, was our staff. And, and so when we, you know, it was all hands on deck, especially during COVID, but it was all, it's all hands on deck. And generally, um, you know, you, 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 drivers generally are people who are looking for health insurance. They're, they're retired. They work, maybe work for the MBTA. I mean, you know, it's a great fit for a lot of people, but it's not a great fit for everyone if you think about the hours themselves. So um, you know, it, it's, it is a big endeavor. And, and um, you know, I, I'd be happy to continue the conversation at some point, but it.
Well, and, and maybe, and perhaps might be actually less appealing to the job market and understanding we're only looking for the position for one or two years, right? As opposed to somebody who's looking to drive a bus for longer for the benefits you just described.
Yeah, correct. To bring someone on and then tell them they were gonna go, we, we would not have a lot of luck with that.
And only for two hours a day. First, we have economies of scale. We're adding existing hours to existing staff here, which is more favorable.
Well, e- even if we, we, even if we wind up right with what you're recommending to us, I just say it's important, I think, for our community to understand, you know, these are the kinds of scenarios that both, you know, Mr. Marin, Dr. Hackett, Mr. Rowe have some experience with in other districts and, and so many different options have been considered. Um, it's helpful to sort of support what the ultimate recommendation is.
Thanks, Mr. Nixon. Um, are there any further questions on the Lynch recommendation at this time? If not, Mr. Marin, you can jump right into the update on registration.
Perfect. Uh, yeah, so we launched a few weeks back, our new online registration portal for kindergarten registration. Uh, and I think we have well over a hundred that have registered as of today. Uh, so this portal leverages uh, your existing Aspen family portal. So if you're familiar with that, checking student grades and schedules as a new um, parent or guardian to town, you go to the same portal and you can, you can now create an account or request an account. Uh, and then once approved, you go through a process and you see all of our forms. that are online and are translatable. And there's a workflow behind that that tracks the process and tracks progress on the, the family side. It allows us to communicate back and forth if they're missing documents or need to give us additional information. And that's why I call out kind of a thanks to Caterina Curtin, Aaron Allen and Cheryl Stein on our end, who spent many hours building this out and testing it. And now they're doing the, the great work in assisting families with process and their password resets and verifying those documents. So they've just done a great job on it. And then the second piece to that is that in the, kind of the start of the next school year, we'll be rolling out this piece here. We're on returning students. And so shifting some of those typical like first day forms, like your handbook policy sign offs or emergency contact updates, photo release, sign offs, those all become a digital sign off now through the same portal. So every year, instead of sending those through paper or other means, families can sign in and, and update those for us.
I mean, it also brings all of your, your children's information forward. So you're not filling the forms out again, you know, over and over and over again. This, this particular aspect of, of the registration process actually garnered oozes and ahs from the, from the piss of the parent, district wide parent group. They were very excited to hear about this, this change because it's just, it will save people a lot of time.
Especially those of us that have more than one child, Dr. Hackett. Over and over again and triple again. Does this, does, now that we're online, does it also automatically translate for families who English might not be their primary language?
Uh, it, yes, it does. So right now it's web-based and they can use their Google to translate it. And they're finalizing the kind of like baked in coded translations in our top five languages. So those are
That's awesome.
Running through. Yep.
I really appreciate that.
Now just briefly mentioned, if you go to that, the website, we've kind of redefined or rebuilt all our pages for preschool registration, kindergarten registration, grades one to twelve. And they all follow kind of similar process and kind of with simpler language and the steps. And so I'll watch you through it step by step, what you need, what your required documents are, kind of it is your homework. And then once that's done, you can go and create that registration account and proceed through there. So with that, that's registration.
Great use of technology. Mr. Hopcraft.
Yeah. So I, I love this. You know, in so many ways, you know, it's, uh, you know, very clear and it communicates what you need to do. It's convenient, reduces errors, reduces, you know, manual entry on, on the part of, of the, the district. All those are great. The one thing I wanted to, to ask or confirm is for people that might have difficulty with technology, is there still an option if someone have a hard time figuring this out to be able to just submit papers they want or submit or something?
Always.
Yep. Yeah. We have both. So we have, we still mirror our paper packet. And then we actually have computers in, in the high school and at Parkhurst. So families that have come in and maybe struggling and they can sit down and we'll walk through it with them and kind of guide them throughout the process.
Mr. Nixon.
I just wanted to add to Mr. Hopcraft's list, but this is going to reduce student stress. It has long frustrated me that eight, nine-year-olds are given a, a bunch of papers and they're told by teachers they have to turn them, they have to bring them back in two days. What kid knows their health plan number, their dental number, the phone number to their pediatrician? And I don't know if L remembers, she probably had to sign off on it, but the start of school, you get a form, it says, I've reviewed the handbook and you have to sign it. And you have like two days to get it back. So I don't know any kid in Winchester, it's going to spend two nights reading a hundred page handbook. So this is, this is really mostly parent responsibility. And given that we approve handbooks in the spring, you know, I, I appreciate it's going to be more accessible. There's no reason why this stuff even needs to wait till the first week of school. I mean, parents can just go in and start checking boxes over the summer.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Marin. I know how much work has gone on in the background around this. It's a single slide in this presentation that doesn't really represent all the tremendous amount of document management and just translating this all into a digital system for everyone. So I just want to thank you and your team for, and the people you've called out here for all the work that went into making this possible and bringing us into the 21st century.
I would just also add just one other thing. And when, when Andrew mentions, you know, Kat and Aaron and Sheldon, it wasn't just getting our current process online. They did a tremendous job, and you saw the website, of really going through every single form and really thinking about what are we asking parents to do? How do we make this easier? And, and being really super clear about the process so that, you know, so it's not cumbersome for parents, especially parents who are coming to us for the first time. Maybe parents who English for, you know, English is not the first language. We really thought, tried to think through how to, how to be more welcoming in what is most, most for a lot of our incoming, it's the first experience they have with school. So they just did a great job and it was hours and hours of work. Much appreciated.
Thanks. Yep. Definitely a great group. With that, I have one last slide. I'm really into here, but just back at Lincoln. Provided with some updates previously. And so it's just some updates from yesterday on the Lincoln School and efforts. There's a flood there over vacation, February vacation. It's a so far, we've had vendors in who have taken up the, the flooring and the, uh, this music classroom and lower level hallway. And this is the gymnasium here. So they're currently, currently doing some assessment on the subfloor. And then we're looking to kind of build out a new wooden gym floor in there too. So, and then our, our great facilities team is doing some painting and washing the, um, the hoops here and things and doing a nice cleaning overall before the new floor goes in. So. And that's it.
Covered by insurance?
Uh, yep. Yeah. The whole, the whole gym and all the flooring. And all this wall work, you can see at the lower, they had to cut up two feet and take away some of the, the walls and all that's been covered by insurance here.
Thank you. And with that, we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Consideration of items related to town meeting was just a placeholder. I had added, I don't have any documents or any information to present to you about that. So with your consent, we'll move on to anticipated agenda items for the next meeting. We have consideration of approval of amended policies that you see stated here. We also have approval of the open enrollment procedures for the school year twenty-two-three, twenty-four. Consideration of final approval of the school year calendar. We had voted a draft that's available for families, but this will be the consideration to have a final school calendar. We don't anticipate any changes with that moving forward, do we, Dr. Hackett? It's the same one we've seen. Just to not make any family service out there that we're changing anything from that draft.
Right.
And we will also have a consideration of fees as a future agenda item for the twenty-two-three, twenty-four school year. I see Mr. Nixon's hand.
I just want to clarify that last item is something we would take up after the close of spring town meeting, I presume?
I presume as well, yes.
Okay. Just because I want to clarify the budget, you know, the budget we voted did not require, you know, raising any fees that I was aware of. And I certainly am inclined to not raise them. So like, yeah, just wanted to get a sense of timing on that. Thank you.
Mr. Brady.
Thank you. I, I just, I know our next thing is future meeting dates. And Ms. Bergstrom, you and I had spoken earlier today. And so I just wanted to propose to the rest of the committee that we consider maybe meeting next Tuesday and potentially taking some time just to do another retreat. Maybe centered around our upcoming potential reorganization. So that was just something that I wanted to put out to the committee for their thoughts on.
So that would be meeting on March twenty-first at the same time. Our regular meeting time. Is that what you're proposing, Mr. Brady?
Yeah, or another time that worked for everybody.
Can I ask members, is that something that you would all be interested in? Do we have some consensus around that? If so, I can send out a doodle poll for times that might work for people on the twenty-first. We have generally held all the Tuesdays in March for for school committee meetings as needed. Happy to hear thoughts.
This would be, this would be evening.
It would be in, it could be an evening, the evening meeting, right?
I still had it checked off in my calendar as a meeting date, even though I knew we had today's day, today's meeting. So.
So that works for you.
Yeah.
I don't have any of that conversation.
Um, do we have a sense of how long this would be?
I think it would need to be more than an hour, maybe forty-five minutes.
I, I could do it.
Okay. Great. Then I will, we will set that agenda and get that information out to people. And then our regular meeting dates would be March twenty-eighth and April eleventh. I, I'm just going to acknowledge that, thanks to L for sticking with us through the whole meeting and coming back after the executive session. We always appreciate our student reps here and to those student reps who were attending with us today in the audience. I hope that you enjoyed seeing this meeting as well and note that there are a few of you still hanging in there too. So thank you very much for taking times out of your evening to participate in this process. We really appreciate it. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Hopcraft?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinessa?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous. I will see you all. Thanks for a great meeting, everyone.
Good man, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.